All right. Good evening, and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting. Tonight is September 5th, and this meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Green, may I prevail upon you to read the public announcements of upcoming meetings?
Yes. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Laquan Property Reuse Committee, the Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town's website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Hanson Day will be held on the Town Hall Green on September 16th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date of September 23rd. Local churches, businesses, and civic organizations will be in attendance with free demonstrations, games, crafts, and food. Come see all Hanson has to offer. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, September 12th, 2023; Select Board, September 26th, 2023. The October Special Town Meeting is on October 2, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. at the Hanson Middle School, 111 Liberty Street.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, are we at 6:15? All right, I'm gonna have to put my tap shoes on for a couple of minutes, because our hearing isn't scheduled until 6:15. So let's hit the new business: Regional Agreement Committee Representative. At our last meeting, Ms. Green mentioned that the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, one more time with feeling, is going to convene for the purposes of finalizing the regional agreement, and as such, they require a representative to the Regional Agreement Committee. And Ms. Green had asked us to take that into consideration, and if anybody felt particularly passionate about this subject, or even mildly passionate, or perhaps just inclined, that they would offer up their role in joining this committee. So did anybody feel so inclined?
How often do they meet?
They meet on Mondays at 5:00.
That rules me out.
Probably once a month, maybe twice a month if there's items that need to be discussed.
Okay. All right. I mean, we do need a representative.
All the committees on the line either meet on Mondays or Tuesdays, so there's not enough Mondays in the calendar.
Yeah, I work on Monday nights.
I wonder, Ms. Green, may we inquire about flexibility of meetings?
I can inquire, but I know most of the--
I realize we are just one voice, but we do need to have a seat at the table, so I would hope that some consideration would be given to perhaps being flexible about the day of the week that the meeting is happening. Would you mind circling back with those folks and letting us know?
Absolutely.
All right. And in your folder is a little note from Paul Clark, who has been tirelessly running the Damian's Freaky 5K Road Race for I don't even know how many years, a lot of years, and he's done a fantastic job doing it with no incident. Oh, 13th Annual, there you go. So they are asking to approve the annual Damian's Freaky 5K Road Race, which is going to be held on Sunday, October 29th, starting at Damian's Pub. And the race will start, and located at 270, the race will benefit. It doesn't really say where it's gonna end, but it's 5K.
No, it does. It starts.
But I know in the past Chief Mix has had no concerns about this, has felt that they were very compliant with everything that was requested. He already said that he has the approval of the Hanson PD and the Hanson Fire Department. So, Ms. Green, I would, not that I'm questioning Mr. Clark, but I, just out of an abundance of caution, would ask that you circle back and verify that, you know, that both chiefs are okay with that. And contingent upon that, I will entertain a motion to approve the Damian Freaky 5K Road Race on October 29th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. And then we got notice from the Board of Health that they had voted to appoint Arlene Diaz to the Transfer Station Task Force, and accordingly, since it's our task force, we too have to vote to appoint her, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Arlene Diaz to the Transfer Station Task Force.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. We also received the resignation of Scott Davis from the Facebook Committee, and I would like to add that for a number of years, with very little thanks, Mr. Davis was the lone voice of the town of Hanson on Facebook. And now that we're moving towards having a new website where a lot of those updates are gonna be automated, and where we've also hired our part-time administrative assistant, part of whose role will be social media, I think Mr. Davis has decided to resign. So I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Davis from Facebook Committee.
So moved with regret.
Second with regret.
All in favor? And thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, I've got five more minutes, let's see. What can we talk about?
Committee updates.
We could do committee updates. That's a great idea, Mr. Weeks. Did you have any?
Nope.
Oh, okay, you're just being controversial.
Can I say something about the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah.
You know that you guys have a website that is linked on the town website?
What is the website?
I'll have to find it for you.
All right, yeah.
But literally, there's a link there to an economic development website.
Interesting.
I'll find it.
Like you're saying, we have our own economic development--
Yep.
Okay, well, that's a first for us. I wonder if that's something new?
No, I think it's been updated for a long time.
Is it the Hanson Business Network website? Okay, because that's a separate animal, similar, but separate. Okay, well, thanks for bringing that to my attention. We, speaking of Economic Development Committee, we really, really, really aren't accepting anybody else for our upcoming Hanson Day. I said this starting like three weeks ago, and then I've said, oh, all right, people were coming and, you know, giving compelling reasons, and now I'm absolutely maxed out, and we just can't, can't accept anybody else. So we're up to like 60 participants. But it's gonna be off the hook. We're going to have food trucks, of course, Hanson Fire, Hanson Police, Hanson Highway. We've got the Plymouth County Sheriff is going to be doing the K-9 unit demonstration for drug searches. I believe we've got fingerprinting, the Farm from Plymouth County, 4-H, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Oh, American Legion, Plymouth County Beekeepers, Board of Health, Library, and the list goes on and on.
It is, it has.
Okay, yeah, so it's different.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that is September 16th, from 11:00 to 2:00, with a rain date of September 23rd, from 11:00 to 2:00. We're hoping we don't have to do the rain date. We're gonna have a DJ. There'll be fried dough. The Rockland Lions are bringing a truck that cooks fried dough. Essentially, no healthy food choices will be available, but you can come there knowing that and plan accordingly. So, anybody else have any committee updates? So I think now you guys have got a full contingency for the task force. You can start popping again, right?
Yeah, I mean, we were waiting till after Labor Day to make any wish, and so once, I think we get the first week of school, because Mike and I have kids in the school who are just waiting to kind of get a routine going, pick it up again.
You know what? I did have something rather sad, but I did want to mention, perhaps people have seen that our poor little Lucy, our therapy dog, last week was, you know, put to sleep, and I know that you guys all joined me in, you know, sending our condolences to the police department, and specifically to Officer Harrington, who raised Lucy, trained Lucy, spent all kinds of hours with Lucy, and whose family also was involved in raising Lucy. And it's such a heartache to lose her at such a young age. And although there is a replacement dog, truly, I don't think that another dog will ever be as zen and relaxing and wonderful as Lucy was. And so, anyway, our condolences, heartfelt condolences to the HPD and to Officer Harrington on that. Okay. And similarly, I don't have the official write-up here, but we've learned today that John Norton passed away, and anybody that knows John knows he was involved in so many different things, including he was a registrar, various committees, on all kinds of committees in town for years. He along with his wife Patty, so we send our condolences to Patty and to her son and daughter-in-law and grandchildren for the loss of John. And he will be missed at town meeting and, you know, in the halls of Town Hall, so. All right. I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but those two things were actually on my mind. So with that, we are approaching 6:15, which is the layout hearing for Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane. Just a prefatory comment, this is really just sort of required. We're going through the protocol of doing this. We've already done this, the last time that this was on our town meeting warrant, but it's required anytime we have this type of an article in a town meeting warrant for us to have a layout hearing. So I will entertain a motion to enter the layout hearing for Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So, please be advised that the Select Board for the town of Hanson is holding a public hearing pursuant to general law, Chapter 41, C-81 and C-82, today, to consider the layout and the Select Board's intention to layout for possible acceptance as public ways, the ways known as Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane. Said ways are more fully described as shown on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan of Alden Way, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated April 22nd, 1997, last revised on July 14th, 1997, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 803 of 1997, and Plan Book 80--40, excuse me, pages 652 to 659, as modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Stringer Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated February 3rd, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 701 of 1998, and Plan Book 41, page 706, and as modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Gray Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated November 20th, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 20 of 1999, and Plan Book 41, page 956. Any and all butters to the list of roadways are strongly encouraged to attend the public hearing and provide comments. Plans are filed in the town clerk's office at 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass., 02341. And as you will recall, the article that we have on the upcoming October Town Meeting Warrant is merely a correction of a, I'd call it like ministerial error, in the article that was passed at the May Town Meeting, for which we already had a layout hearing. So, since we are here for a hearing, I will open it up for public comment. Did anybody have any comments?
No, we just kind of came to see how things work.
We appreciate that.
This is new for us.
This is new for us, too, and we hope that we never have to have a second layout hearing for anything like this. So that's our fondest desire. So we'll just give it a couple of respectful minutes, because it's a hearing, so. Did you have something?
It's mentioning a few different books and pages from previous decades. Is there a new book and page for this that we're doing?
Not yet, no.
Okay. And that not yet, as there will be?
Yes.
Okay.
After, thank you. After all the formalities have been done, yep.
Can I make the motion and give it seconded, and then we'll just kind of leave it open for discussion, and is anyone still gonna do that?
Sure.
Would you mind?
So I move to accept the layout of Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane to become public ways as shown on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan of Alden Way, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated April 22nd, 1997, last revised on July 14th, 1997, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 803 of 1997, and Plan Book 40, pages 652 through 659, as modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Stringer Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated February 3rd, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 701 of 1998, and Plan Book 41, page 706, and as modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Gray Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., 02745, dated November 20th, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 20 of 1999, and Plan Book 41, page 956, copies of which are on file in the office of the town clerk.
I'll second it.
Lovely. Well done, sir.
He should be afraid to read elementary school all aloud.
Well, you seem to have gotten over that impediment. We're proud of you. Okay, so we'll just--
We're not gonna vote on it today, you said?
Well, no, we are gonna vote on it. Did you know some show tunes? We need to fill a little bit of time? I don't know. Was there anything else that people wanted to?
I think that this is just, just to reiterate, this is something that the town already voted on at the last town meeting. Just clerical errors resulted in us wanting to make sure we got it right, so that the people get what they were asked, or asked us to do, which is accept these streets, so.
It's a bit of a housekeeping.
Yeah, housekeeping. It's really more of a housekeeping issue. So, but I think we all support it, and we're gonna support it at the October Town Meeting.
Yep. Well, yeah, in fact, that's a good point. We did, we did vote to place it, and we haven't voted--
To recommend.
I think we even voted to support that one, actually. It's one of the few we did, just because there wasn't, you know, wasn't, we didn't feel like FinCom would really feel any kind of way if we had voted on that. We usually do try to wait to support or not support, and see what our FinCom has to say, as our gatekeepers on the financial situation, but we made an exception with that, because we felt pretty strongly about it. Okay. Well, I'm feeling fairly comfortable that we have stretched this out to the longest possible time possible. So I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, great. So then I will entertain a motion to close our hearing on Alden Way.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, fantastic. Okay. So that brings us to, thank you, ladies, unless you want to stay around, we've got a lot of other exciting things. Okay, all right. I understand.
Thank you. We'll see you on the second.
All right. So, October Special Town Meeting Warrant Review, Ms. Green.
Okay. Members of the board, I'm Chair, Vice Chair, what we have in our package is the most updated Special Town Meeting Warrant. It was reviewed by Town Council over the weekend, and printed out this morning with updates. There are still some articles that we're waiting for additional information, or for further Town Council review, but to point out some updates in the Town Meeting article now, do you want to go through every article again, or you just want to go to the ones--
I think if you could just hit what's changed.
Yes.
And my thought process is, let's back me into required timeline. So we're at the 5th today.
Yes.
I know that Ms. McDowell had given, had had a discussion with Mr. Sullivan from FinCom, who's the Chair of FinCom, about what their timeframe might be for making recommendations, and I think based on that, she's going to go to print on the 15th.
Yes, actually, the Finance Committee is meeting this evening. I've provided them with copies of the warrant that have the explanations in them, so they are meeting this evening.
So that kind of brings me to what I was about to say, which now makes sense, so that's a good thing, is I'm thinking that we should wait until we have their recommendations next week, at which point we then should decide whether we're gonna recommend or not, unless people feel very strongly about doing something in advance of that. Okay. I just think, in the past, we haven't had the luxury of having things to FinCom in time to have them make a recommendation, and have us respond, and take that into consideration. Do you think there's any way we might be able to invite somebody from FinCom to kind of give us a little color commentary where we might need it next week?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, if they're available, it would be helpful to know why they supported or didn't support something, because it might, you know, it might kind of change our minds, or at least give us something to think about. But yeah, if you want to hit the high points of anything that you've changed, that would, I think, be the best place to start.
Okay. So, Article 1, I just want to bring to the board's attention, I received a bill today from one of the departments that is a past fiscal year bill, so we will be adding that to this warrant. I tried to add it today, but Lynn has it locked in a way that I couldn't add anything to it, so. Next week, you will see an additional past fiscal year unpaid bill on this.
And who was that from?
From the police station for about $316.
Okay.
Article 2, we had discussed last week, the administrative assistant to the Select Board position is now back under Section 11C, part-time positions. It is now number FF. Article 3 remains the same. That has the planning, Town Planner salary increase, and the transportation for the two agricultural high schools, so that's remained the same. Article 4, we just went through. Article 5 is capital, remains the same, no changes. Article 6, no changes. Article 7, no changes. Article 8, no changes. 9, no changes. 10, no changes. Article 11, no changes. 12, no changes.
All right, wait, 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 on 12, is it 12? No, keep going, so I'm behind, I'm behind flipping.
Okay. Article 13, no changes. Article 14, I gather we are still waiting on--
That's the one, yeah.
--Town Council to have a discussion with the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Shouldn't we have that sooner rather than later? I believe a conversation did happen with the Chair of Community Preservation, but I have not, I don't think--
You're not pretty to the results.
I don't think we've gotten a formal update from either of those parties, so if you could circle back with them, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm watching that. Okay, so Article 15, the board, the board, both the Wage and Personnel and Select Board had voiced their suggestions and recommendations that the town administrator be removed, and wage and personnel and Select Boards be inserted, and that both these boards need to approve any vacation carryover. Article 15 addresses allowing an employee through the approval of both the Wage and Personnel Board and the Select Board of carrying over up to 10 days vacation. Of course, there would have to be reasoning that would be proffered to both boards for this request for the carryover, but the language has been updated to remove Town Administrator and insert Wage and Personnel and Select Board for approval. So that is what we have on Article 15. Article 16, again, the language, the Town Administrator has been removed, Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board have been inserted with language to deem basically the approval of both boards for this, and also additional language at the bottom kind of addresses the discretion of the boards with authorizing granting any existing employees additional vacation days, based on the best interest of the town and the decision of both Wage and Personnel and Select Board. Shall be a final decision and shall not be subject to any grievance procedures. So they just, they kind of hit it the highlights with this language.
And why did we put "and shall not be subject to any grievance procedure?" Because wouldn't it only be subject to a grievance procedure if it's a position that is under the union contract?
Yes.
Stick out languages for that.
But they, well, it is, it is basically, it was suggested or responded to by the union that this here is for non-union personnel, but they probably have this language in there just as a safe, just to be safe.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. I did have one little tweak in the explanation. The, it's, in order, the last sentence, "in order to be competitive and retain employees", this, I think it should say amendment, also provides flexibility to the--
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So that's Article 16. Let's see, Article 17, no changes. 18, no changes. 19, no changes. 20, no changes. 21, no change. 22, no change. Article 23, so there was a concern expressed regarding the language with going back to prior May 2023 line item, and basically, because the Camp Kewahnee, the line item was removed and is now a earned retention type of budget line item, that's why that language was formatted that way. But to just make it way easier and easier to understand, what we did was we added simple language, $50,000 to be added to supplement Camp Kewahnee salaries.
Yep, that's careful.
So, easy, easy to understand, and then the explanation provides the reasoning for it in which salaries they are looking to supplement.
I love it. Simplistically beautiful.
So, language change on that.
Yep.
Article 24, this was the change from the, this is the brickwork at the library, so they had requested the amount be increased from $10,000 to $20,000. Actually, we're still waiting on some language changes on this. Charlie Baker met with Corinne Cuffato today at the library to further discuss this, so I fully suspect within the next few days, I will have some language tweaks on this explanation and the article.
Okay.
Okay, to provide to the Select Board for next week.
But the dollar amount isn't changing.
The dollar amount's gonna remain the same.
Fundamental rationale is not changing.
Yes, correct. Correct.
This is different than what we had before. This is slightly different than last year.
Yeah, it is slightly different. It doesn't say something about like the--
It's even cleaner.
I don't know. There was something that Ed and I both felt, had a little bit of a violent reaction to the last time, but it's not in there.
And that's been removed.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Article 25 has remained the same, there's no changes. Article 26, no changes. 27, no changes. 28, no changes. Article 29 remains the same, and then Article 30 remains the same, so no changes. So those are the highlights of the changes and updates for this most up-to-date Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Now, wasn't there something you thought you might need to add?
The unpaid, the unpaid bill.
No, I think there was something else that you mentioned to me last week.
Oh, that was the, it was the transportation for the agricultural high schools.
Okay.
So we have, we have one line in Article 3, line item number 2 is for Norfolk Agricultural High School transportation, and then line, oh, actually, that needs to be number 3. Sorry, that needs to be renumbered number 3, is for the Bristol Agricultural High School, so we added that transportation cost in here as well, but I think that was added last week.
That's in both boxes, right? Basically changed to 3.
Yeah, both boxes need to be changed to 3.
Yep.
So that's been added in. So we added that transportation cost in here as well, but I think that was added last week.
That's in both boxes, right? Basically changed to 3.
Yeah, both boxes need to be changed to 3. So that's been added in. The, it looks like the Norfolk Agricultural High School, that amount for transportation is going to remain, based on most current information that I've received from this one.
Ms. Green, I think it had to do with insurance at Camp Kewahnee.
Oh, yes, yes. So there was a, so the insurer is requiring a plot map with all of the structures at Camp Kewahnee indicated on where they all exist. We did receive another quote for about $7,900, but in the interim, our Town Planner was, did come across a map of the property that had little blocks that indicated where the structures were, and the insurer indicated that they would accept that.
Oh.
So I did send it to them on Friday, and I'm just waiting to see if they accept it. The Camp Kewahnee Commission is still considering having the plot map done, but we did receive that much lower quote, which brings it to a completely different threshold, and it's much more reasonable cost for someone to...
So you don't think we need to add an article?
I don't think we, at this point, we need to add that. Long-winded answer to that.
Okay, great. That's good news.
Save us $8,000?
I was going to say, another win by Mr. DeFrances.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, with that, any strategic planning update? Have we reached out to Anne to make sure that she's available and...
I have not yet, but I'm going to put that on my schedule, so you can get to it.
Okay, great. Then that brings us to Town Administrator Report, Ms. Green.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Since last Tuesday, not a whole lot has happened in my office, other than like routine day-to-day. So I thought I would really just recognize and talk about grants a little bit more. So at our last meeting in my Town Administrator Report, I noted that there were two grant writers that, basically in Town Hall. However, we have more grant writers in the town. We have our, our Police, Fire, Library, Council on Aging, Conservation and Health. All of the Department apply for grants for their departments, and the town sees a great benefit from the efforts of these talented Department Heads in applying for the grants. And just to hone in a little bit, our Hanson Library has applied for and received $44,590 in Cultural Council Grants. Our Hanson Fire Department has applied for grants and has received $61,148 for training, equipment and youth cardiac screening. Hanson Police Department, Safe Route to School Grant, Municipal Road Safety Grant, $20,000 per year for those grants. Bulletproof Vest Grants are $11,000, and the Comfort Dog Grant. Again, all of these benefit the town in a number of different ways. Highway Department, very instrumental in securing the grant funding from Mass DOT for the repaving of County Road, a portion of Franklin Street and Main Street. That could, that would cost the town upwards of $2.5 million to do that work. So, you know, the project's meant to prolong the roadways an additional 10 years, but that project is still underway. So Mass DOT, basically, they grant-funded engineering, supervision, construction of all of that work, and it's still underway, but much better than what we had. Council on Aging, they, our Director there applies for grants, and she's received the funds to add personnel to assist with the increase in need services for our elderly residents. You know, the town, I know that there's questions on Facebook and things like that regarding grants. I can ensure every resident out there that these Department Heads are talented, they're dedicated, they apply for these grants. We don't always get them because they're competitive in nature, so we hope for the best. But they, they have secured a variety of grants for the town, and they continue to apply for grants and seek out grants. So again, the town's fortunate to have these talented and dedicated employees on staff. I want to recognize all their efforts they put in for these grants, and the town benefits 110% from all these efforts.
And I do want to mention, it's a huge increase in the number of grants that we're receiving in the last, I'd say, four years versus the 10 years before. And I, but I'm wondering, is there any way that we can kind of, without over-engineering, I don't want to kill an ant with a cannon, but is there any way that we can have some consolidated database or list of grants or something like that? Because it's hard to wrap your mind really around, if you think about all of the dollars that we're getting. That doesn't even include earmarks that we're getting from, you know, from the state, you know, for various projects. So if, if again, you know, if it's not a Herculean task, if there would be some way to kind of like canvas that.
Well, now with the addition of Emily, we'll be able, we'll be able to get these together. You know, not to mention the, the tip for the McQuann Street, the 13 million. You know, that has been a, that's been a team effort with the Select Board's Office, with Town Planner's Office, with our Police and Fire, that's been, and our legislative partners as well, that's been a very, a team effort.
And I know Robbie O'Brien's bought money to buy equipment.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and I don't think people really realize, you know, how much, when you look at it in the aggregate, it's kind of astounding, honestly. So, you know, $10,000, $11,000 here and there may not really sound that, but when you put it all together, it's a really good chunk of change.
It's a lot of money, yeah, it's a lot of money. And, you know, and Council on Aging to add the staffing, our Director, Mary Collins, has noted the increase in the services for the elderly residents, so this extra staff is helping to fit that need.
That's awesome.
Also, too, I'm reporting the asbestos abatement at McQuann is complete. The, we will be seeing fencing put around the building. The playground is officially closed, because the demolition is going to start in the next week or two. We're going to, the windows, I guess, I hear, have been removed from the building. So in a few weeks, we're going to be saying goodbye to McQuann.
And I think there were some questions, you know, could, geez, you know, it's the only playground in town, blah, but can, you know, could you guys fence it up? But I think it really gets to a safety issue with all the heavy equipment and, you know, the unpredictable nature of a demolition. I don't think we want to risk anybody's little, you know, any little people being harmed or anybody really being harmed in the process.
Yeah, I mean, just by the proximity to the building, you know, demolishing, materials fly, so no, unfortunately, we cannot, yeah, we can't risk that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we know when or how about how long that's going to be closed for? Is it just a matter of weeks, or is it the whole project?
Well, hopefully, if the weather continues to cooperate, I'd say maybe two, three weeks, maybe. If the weather doesn't cooperate, could, could bring it out, but, you know, they're working to make this part of it quicker, but...
Well, just to be clear, Mr. Hill's question, yes, so two or three weeks for the demolition?
Two or three weeks, yes.
When will the playground be reopened?
As soon as they're able to clear it and make it safe for...
And maybe a little bit after that.
Yeah, for people to be able to walk and, yeah, not trip and fall over everything, because they are going to flatten it out.
Once it's flattened.
They're not getting rid of the playground.
No, 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 absolutely not.
At the foundation of the...
Yeah, no, playground's not going away. You know, the students are all back in school. Drivers out there, please be careful. And I just wanted to also announce that Dollars for Scholars Great Pumpkin Classic Car Show is coming up really quick, October 8th, 10 to 2, at Whitman Hanson Regional School District. The, it's $15 per family or $5 per person, $10 per show car, and all the benefit, all the benefits proceeds go to the Dollars for Scholars for Whitman Hanson.
And we also want to welcome Emily Strick, who are first.
And welcome Emily.
Today is her first day, so...
Yep.
Very happy and excited to have her on board. Yeah. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
And executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares, building litigation discussions administrative professional unions. So following through on the adjournment, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will entertain a motion to enter executive session for the reasons mentioned before.
So moved.
Okay, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 And we are entering executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Thank you.